Okay. I'm gonna call to order the Deerfield School Board meeting of Wednesday, June nineteenth. If everyone could join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, kids, the scare measures have been shutting down today, so if they do what?
What, it's hot or something?
Rolling blackouts or something.
Yeah.
It was just.
Fine.
Can you hear one shut off on this?
Sounds good. Um, so we are going to open the public hearing on trust funds. I'm gonna read the notice that was published. The Deerfield School Board ruled a public hearing on June nineteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. At the Deerfield Community School to discuss withdrawing twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars from the school building repair trust fund for the purpose of the following repairs to the air handler in the gym, kitchen hood fan, sprinklers, smoke detection, and C O detectors. Does anyone have any comments about withdrawing money from the trust fund for those purposes? Okay. I will close the public hearing on the trust funds and then I will make a motion to withdraw twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars from the school building repair trust fund.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes of June fifth, twenty twenty four.
I'm moving, we accept the minutes, June fifth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, we have a motion to be of second.
Second.
Woo, good job, okay.
Sorry, we said.
Nancy. Um, welcome, Nate.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments about the minutes as written for June fifth, twenty twenty four?
Would just like my last name to be spelled with two R's, please. Thank you.
Any other corrections? Okay, so we will correct the spelling of the last name, of course. Um, any other changes? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes for June fifth, twenty twenty four with the correct last names spelled?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so.
Okay, you are staying abstaining, okay. Three, zero, two. All right, we are on to public comments.
Greg McMoore, North Road, so please stop me if I'm incorrect in this, but last month, uh, a third grader was almost hit by a car walking between the trailer and the school building. Is this correct?
Sure. Um, he, he wasn't almost hit, there was a truck that was going slowly through. It was a, somebody who was helping at the outdoor classrooms. He didn't realize that that road was closed off and because he was parked somewhere different. But the student went out and stopped and he stopped suddenly as well, it wasn't. It, he, there was definitely cause for concern, we contacted the parents, we'll come in.
So I know in a previous meeting, I don't remember which one, but a while ago, I distinctly remember saying, all the years we've had the trailers out there, nothing's ever happened. Something just happened. That's a pretty big deal. If it were my kid, I would have been absolutely furious that she was put in that situation. So, please take the summer and really consider all of the wonderful ideas that townspeople have been giving you for condensing classrooms, making space, and finally getting those kids out of the trailers because it's not safe, it's never going to be safe. And I hate to think of what could happen.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Really black meeting now, so I was trying to see if the meat lane part, but I think it's the right one, so I can't stay for long. I'm trying to get home. That would probably be the.
This matched when I, I just.
You did match it up, I don't know why.
Maybe you've talked before.
I didn't.
I don't.
I can get home.
I don't know, I'm sorry, but that's okay, we figured it out, but I don't know what other people probably think of. Um, the only thing I want to speak about, I like what I'm hearing about, um, you know, having a conversation about teachers and classmates and doing all that. Um, my thoughts are probably not popular, but, um, as far as it relates to specialists, I would really like to see Deerfield kind of move that specialist. So the specialist positions, I believe, were grant funded for a part of COVID and now we're incorporating them into our education. So from that standpoint, it's still helping these students that need to be caught up. Um, and I think that catch up really happens best in summer school. Um, I have personal experience with this, doing both the specialist's work inside the school and in summer. And I saw significant improvement in the couple weeks of the summer with that more smaller classes, more individualized tasks on specific areas that students needed help with. Uh, so I would really like to see discussion go in the direction of really moving some of that specialized attention into summer programs for these students. Um, I feel like that's something that can be identified around trimester one. I mean, two, excuse me, around the second trimester, so you can plan for it at the end of the school year um, and figure out what kind of staff would help those students really need. And that, I personally feel would help the students catch, either catch up, stay current, or maybe get a little head that they might need for the following year. And I think teachers would be able to kind of help their parents and make that direction for their children instead of trying to do catch up and current learning in the same bubble in the school year, which was hard for my child and myself to really kind of do current work and trying to just do that little bit of shared teaching. So, um, in doing that, I personally feel like overhead for staff would be reduced a bit because we could utilize the same staff and we're asked not pay health insurance and retirement for the staff that we already do in our contract. Um, they obviously may suffer, they could gain for, to pay extra, but that bubble is not negative as many staff members they think. See a little bit of a contradiction. And then space, so if the specialist really needed a space, I'm thinking I'll introduce them specifically in sections where I know, but, um, they would need space to discuss their cases, so perhaps we can do math, hand reading, abreading if you want, you know, and you want a classroom for those teachers that need to do that work. But essentially that, the learning with the students is going to take place in summer and outside of the classroom. So I think if we do get classroom space during that classroom year, and in this case, that would help eliminate at least one of the modulars, we're down to three kindergarten classrooms. If we could get another classroom back, even to start trying to work away. That's just my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Okay. Uh, we will move forward with the gender review. Um, we have an addition, where would you like?
Maybe.
Just do it next?
Sure.
Get it out of the quick.
Yes.
For, um, the, a joint committee for the electric buses. So we will add that as number seven and then bump everything down.
Are you doing the handbook? Um, I don't, if not much has changed, I don't know if you want to review that or if you want to just do it in August. We, we're actually in the process of taking a look at the probation, uh, procedure. Um, so that whole section is going to be updated anyway, so I'm happy to show you. The only changes really to the handbook, do you want me to, I'm sorry, come on.
It's a, do you want to add that or do you want to wait till August?
Um, I think we can wait till August if, if there's going to be additional changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this year we did it in August.
Yeah.
Um, so long as that people know to review it in advance of the meeting because it is.
Yeah, we'll get it in there, especially if, um, maybe there's an A I, updated A I procedure as well that you want to take a look at.
On our own.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll make sure it's on the first meeting in August.
Okay. Good.
It'll be in there in advance.
Yes, yes, you can get it to me in like a week in advance.
Sure, sure.
Okay, anything else?
Yep. Um.
Okay.
Buses.
Drink, yeah. Electric buses.
So, um, Pembroke, as you know, Pembroke and Deerfield joined up and Pembroke led the way on, um, applying for the grant for electric buses, which we were awarded. Um, but now there's a whole lot of work that needs to happen, um, to research to see where we have been awarded the money, but we have, I think, two years to decide if this is gonna fly, um, and we're gonna take the funding. So we're putting together a work group and Pembroke Board requested that I ask you if you'd like to do a joint committee so that there weren't two towns working toward the same goal and researching the same information. Um, so there are two board members in Pembroke that will be on, it's, they're calling it a research committee for the electric buses. Um, there's obviously a lot of information that we need to work through and gather before we can make any decisions. Um, so if, you know, Ellen's the contact, um, but if you want to join in.
Well, I'm just, um, I guess I'm a little confused, I didn't bring my book with me, but, um, I did the training and I thought we had to put in our request November.
Just November?
Yeah.
The request for.
How, whatever that we want to get.
I don't know that, I didn't look at the webinar, I know Amy was gonna join in.
Yeah, and I had a lot of questions for her and I sent her an email, she's been busy, she got back to me, but.
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen the application or any of the stuff, because I had a million questions when I started looking at it.
Yeah, there's a, she started a joint folder so that, that we would share, that she is starting to populate, I don't know how much she got in there.
Oh, okay. Right, she mentioned she was gonna do that, she told me it'd probably be Sunday she'd have it done, so I haven't seen that, but when I did the training, I, I'll look at it again, but I thought it was November.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe I had the wrong year.
Do you want to?
Maybe it was November.
Join up though with.
Yes, I, I definitely would. Oh, to have, for, for it with Pembroke.
Yeah.
I don't see why, I mean, we might have some different issues than them, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure we could help each other, yeah.
At least the question and answer part, you could work on together.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And then if you want one more person on the committee, so there's two Deerfields and two Pembroke.
Yeah. Who's gonna join? Who's gonna join? Don't leave me hanging in.
I'll, I'll join you.
Ah, yes. Somebody join.
All right, is everyone okay with that? Do you want to make a motion about? Do we need to?
Um, I would.
Okay, because it is gonna be a subgroup of the board, it's gonna be, um. I will try you for both of them. I don't know if we made a motion for Ellen.
Um, I don't know, just. Oh, yeah, I don't think we did. I don't think you set up.
I think you designated.
I was on the transportation committee, so we just, yeah.
Yes, you designated Ellen as the contact, but I think it would be a joint committee with Pembroke.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you'd nominate the two people to be on the committee.
I will nominate Ellen and Nancy to serve as the Deerfield representatives, the Joint Committee to Research Electric Buses.
Yes.
With Pembroke.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make sure the shared, shared folder is shared with both of you.
Thanks.
Okay. Eighth grade algebra discussion. Continue.
Yes, so, um, when I brought the conversation back to the eighth grade, sixth of the middle school math team, um, we, I told you your concerns about, um, the higher level students and what that was gonna look like and, um, with that information, we took a look at, um, our seventh grade math teacher took a look at his numbers, um, and felt like he could pull together more like eighteen students, eighteen to twenty students. So we are going to put algebra, um, in for next year. Uh, Mr. Dudley met with all stu, all the students, um, handed out the letter. There is a letter that basically says that it's important that they participate, that they do formative assignments, that they, um, do, you know, work hard to do well on their summatives and that if they don't, if they're not going to bring that kind of level of uh, rigor and grit to the class, then they could potentially be put to a different math test, which did happen this year to, um, for a student. So anyway, that's it, back on the table, I think that the conversation will happen much earlier next year. The, um, there is, you know, as we're looking at, um, moving forward, there is a lot of talk about heterogeneously grouping kids and, um, differentiating within a heterogeneous group and that type of thing. So we will be having this conversation again, uh, in the fall and later as we prepare for our next school year. And, uh, but we have, I think, I think there's, I think there's, we got up to twenty students to, um, into the electric classes.
We have sixty proposed, so that's like twenty anyway, right, twenty in class?
Yeah.
So those were the seventh grade students that were spoken to about it this year?
Yes.
They will be eighth graders next year?
Correct.
So this is only gonna be offered to the eighth grade?
It's only in eighth grade classes. It's only in the classes. Sorry. You get the people in there. Um, yeah, so it's eighth grade and, um, I think the other part of the conversation was, um, Mr. Saint Germain had really hyped it up for a lot of the kids that, you know, you really gotta work hard and preparing you for, you're going to get into, you want to do this and so, um, really felt strongly, really advocated to, to give as many kids as he could into, into the class.
I think one thing I didn't realize the first time we talked about this is that kids, I think with written approval, get a, a course credit at Concord at least for taking algebra, so they get a high school credit.
That is, that is. Correct, well, and they're, they're recommended by the, correct, the eighth grade teacher. Part of the problem is that they, they get recommended in January and there's a lot of time between January and June and the hope is that they will have the skill by the time June comes, but, um, so, you know, at the time, I think I had mentioned during the conversation, there was only about half of the kids that went to class that he felt strongly he could recommend, um, and in the end, if he really was probably a little less than that, it needed to, by June.
Got it. So then the students that are not recommended for the course credit would repeat algebra.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about algebra?
Just, I wasn't, I was here for last meeting's discussion of it, but, you know, look, reading through the notes and just trying to think back from, you know, working here and knowing what was going on, I guess I'm glad to see that it's gonna continue for next year and then have the discussion. But again, Deerfield being small, you know, we don't have a lot of extras that we offer our middle school kids to go on to, we don't have a foreign language for them. You know, we don't, I mean, a lot of schools don't have shop and home ec and those kind of things, but to me, if we can give them something, those kids that want it and wanna work hard for it, as long as we can fit it into the schedule and stuff like that, I think, I personally think it's a, a good thing to offer for the kids.
You might have said this, I just wanna check again. So when the kids sign up for it, they do understand that if they don't, at the end of the year, you know, Mr. Dudley doesn't feel that they're ready, they don't get the credit, they know that, that's clear to them, right?
Um, I, I'll double check the letter that goes home, but I'm pretty sure that's stated.
Yeah.
And then go parent and student sign that letter and bring it back, and there's a summer package to work on.
Good, yeah. I just think it's good to make sure that they're really clear about it, yeah.
Yeah. Was that, do you remember if, if that was being clear to the students?
Uh, I can't remember that detail.
I'll clarify that for you.
I think it probably was.
All right, anything else? All right. Budget review. Um, it pained me slightly to take my budget binder out today, but. Um, so I added this to the agenda and I invited Amber, thank you so much Amber for coming. The reason I want to talk about this now is that budget season comes in quickly. We, you know, sort of go through the summer and then we're sort of boom into the fall into budget season. I think for the new members and even for Ellen and I have only been through this once or twice, it's very shocking to get your first budget binder and just try to get all the information.
Understand it first.
Understand what's happening, um, and then be at a place where you can make proposals or recommendations or ask the questions. And while we devote many meetings to the budget, I think it's, it's, they're very packed, full of discussion already, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone had binder and that you can spend the next few months sort of digesting it, asking me or Patty or, you know, through Amber. It eventually gets to Amber, but you can ask them to me or Patty, um, if you have questions or, you know, I think the best way to sort of approach the budget is, you know, you don't have to come in the first day with all these proposals, but I think having some idea of if you want to make changes or if you want to propose something, having that as early as possible, because one change to the budget takes a lot of time. So we don't want to sort of at the last minute be making sort of monumental changes because then that throws off our getting it to the M B C and then, I guess what I'm just trying to say is I want everyone to sort of come into budget season prepared because we are on a pretty tight timeline in terms of us reviewing it and getting it over to the M B C on a reasonable timeline.
Timeline.
Pardon?
What is the timeline now?
What is the timeline? Our budget is typically ready, what, end of October, November?
Yeah, we start meeting in October, well, we, we start presenting to the school board in October. We're meeting well and again, it's on our side, it comes well before that, but the first presentation to the school board is.
I think it would be helpful, Amber, if you could give us a little overview of how you create the budget, the sort of steps that come before it comes to us, because I know we review this and we spent some time in the first meeting of the budget discussing this, but I think it's helpful, um,
Sure.
to have that discussion now.
Absolutely, and I actually also, I'm gonna put on my glasses, I can't even see. Um, I created this chart for you as well, actually I already had it for you, so I can save it to repurpose it. Um, and basically it talks, is it, the top one is the school budget process and then the bottom is the S A U.
Okay.
So that you can see there's slight differences, but pretty similar. Um, so basically, the, it starts with the principal meeting with the staff, kind of going over what their requests are. We do work with a zero based budget. So what I mean by that is we start with zero and we build upon it. So, and the main reason we do that is because every year is different, and the needs every year are different. Of course, there are some things that are going to be similar, um, or maybe right on the same, um, but what one needs are for one year might not be for the next, that anywhere from supplies to equipment to personnel, benefits, whatever it may be. So that's why we work with zero and we build on it. So, uh, the principal meets with, um, or communicates with the staff to figure out what the budget requests are. Um, then those requests are generated into a budget form. Previous years, we used to have in Excel. Now it's different this past year, you saw it in the divisions. Um, so now, um, the principal or administration, whoever decides going to be entering, can actually enter right into our finance system now, which is great because before, we both couldn't work on it at the same time, where now we can both be in there at the same time and, um, we're not bothering each other. Um, so we're able to work in tandem. So we generate first a first draft of what we think we would need and then, um, the principal then meets with, um, with Patty multiple times, I think it's like almost every Friday for weeks, um, before a actual first draft is given. Um, we started, I think, two years ago, we also made another change. We used to present the full budget, meaning every account line, um, would be drafted for the first draft. Um, and we changed that during COVID, actually. So that the building, the, the board receives the principal's request first, which are basically the building needs. And then anything that's more like operational, overhead, those type of things, I would then put in after, um, the principal has presented the building needs. And we've done that for a couple reasons, one is the timeline. Um, there is some information that I need in order to put in the budget to be more effective, to be able to present, like special ed figures. A lot of those numbers don't come in until mid-October to end of October. So, being allowed to, the board being able to at least get one version of the budget with at least building needs starts the process. Um, it allows us to gather as much data as we can before we present the second draft, which includes personnel, benefits, um, special education, uh, any E O L services, transportation, utilities, um, anything that's risk management, those types of things are the things that I add to the budget that's more beyond what the building needs. So we start with draft one, comes before the board, the principal presents. Once that done, I will then enter in my numbers, um, and then I meet with superintendent to go over what that second draft looks like and we make whatever changes are determined at that time before we present to the school board the second draft. In the second draft, um, now you have seen a full bottom line because you didn't see a bottom line really the first draft because all the numbers weren't in. Um, so it does give you two takes to kind of chunk it out because it is so much information to kind of look at it through a different scope, the second draft. Um, that gives us time to wind address any questions you might have had from the building level at that second meeting and then any questions you might have on the operations.
And I guess I should have backed up, I guess take for granted that everyone knows who Amber is. But it occurred to me while you were talking about that people may not have ever met you before. So, this is Amber Wheeler, she's our business administrator, uh, she works for the S A U, so, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're good. Um, so that's basically it, so obviously the school board then determines, um, you know, through multiple versions, you go back, make whatever changes need to happen. Once the school board has determined what their final proposed budget is, it goes before the, excuse me. Um, and then that budget really then becomes their budget and then they make whatever recommendations or changes they would like to make before it goes before the public. Uh, which again, is another opportunity for any changes before it gets a deliberative session where again, fortune just before it gets to that.
Awesome. Um, and I would recommend for anyone who has not been to come to the M B C meetings, um, to see how the process works, to see sort of what the discussions are like, what they're about. And if you're, of course, welcome to speak about the budget if you'd like, um, when you come.
And these budget, these binders are the same every year, the only difference is that they're updated information. So as you're looking through these, um, you're, the good thing about having that ahead of time is you can kind of digest what type of information is in there. Every piece of information is back up to the information that's in the budget. So it just kind of gives you a little bit more detail of the law and some of the lines. Um, so the only thing that would really be different when we move into the next budget session is there will obviously be some updated figures.
And I do just wanna clarify the budget binders that we handed out today to the new members are from last year. So these are, this is not current, so you will get a full new one of these, um, come October. But I just, I wanted you to have them so you can see sort of where things were. I think another word of caution is that our, as we've heard at many school board meetings, our budget was frozen most of the year, so the actuals will probably look a little bit different for the next budget cycle. So I would keep this, um, and I, I think we do a two-year look back for actuals.
Well, with the new system.
Maybe not, I was gonna say, maybe not.
We used to, but with infinite vision, our system, it only allows so many columns. Um, and so this one does, it looks like we did actuals for twenty-one, twenty-two, then we had the voted twenty-two, twenty-three, um, then actuals and then voted again, so we go back a couple of years.
Okay.
And so I think that's a great, um, thing to actually bring up about actuals and another reason why we zero, um, we do zero based budget. Because if you just look at what actually happened, it does not a true representation of what the building actually needed.
Right, so that's, that's my word of caution that like this, the actuals from this year are probably going to be very skewed is because we had very unexpected, uh, charges for special education, so some of the areas that we did budget for that we did plan to spend on, we did not, so. Take with a grain of salt.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
And there, there's been previous years where grant money has affected the budgets.
The actual line and, yeah, so. The last several years have been not a true reflection of really what the building needs because there have been one either shortfall or additional revenue that we would not normally have to.
I think it's worth going back to the timeline a little bit.
Yes. Yes.
Because it, you know, you, you probably think, oh my gosh, October and it doesn't get voted on until March, this is like a month and months, but it's really tight when the turnaround comes, which is why it's important to really look at the rosters and look at the enrollment and if you're thinking about making some changes, um, you know. And if you're thinking about making some changes, um you know, we're, we're barely starting a new school year. I'm sitting with Kristen in September, October. The school year is barely started and we're trying to figure out what we need the next school year. So you, you have to budget way in advance and you can't even start. And we're trying to make sure Amber's got the books closed enough that she can tell us what we spent the year before. So it's just a really tight, um you know, we just don't have all the invoices in that we need. And trying to project out from a year how much your electricity is going to be when you barely finish the last year. Um it's, it's really, really tight and we have to have it ready. The NBC has work to do, so they're looking for ours mid-December. So that only leaves you about two or three meetings unless you add meetings, which you end up doing usually. Um but any discussion that you want can start whenever you want. You don't have to wait until Amber hands you um the budget or Kristen hands you the budget. If you're looking through this binder and you go through your budget and you have questions, we can talk about that anytime. We talk about it now and help you do whatever you need to do to be prepared.
Yeah, and I would, um it also is a little bit tight from getting the first edition of the budget to our board meeting. But if you have an hour or two, I would try to go through it before the first meeting. Because we, like I said, we go through it for several meetings. But I think discussions should happen as quickly as possible so that we're not delayed in getting it sent over to the NBC. Cause they also have deadlines, they have to do their public hearing, I think. I don't know what the timeline is this year, but last year I think it was like the first or second week of January. So we have to make sure that everything is over to them so they can properly review it. Um and they have a lot of questions which we are happy to answer, but it does take time. So you know, we don't want to rush things and you know, I think we all are very happy to answer questions. It's very, it's very confusing and when you look at it, I think there's a lot of information that is not obvious. So if you're like, why did we spend twenty thousand over the actual or twenty thousand over budget? You know, there's probably a very good reason for that and we can, we can explain it when we are happy to, yeah.
Um all the work you're describing, yes, it's, it is a lot of work, but at the same time, it does happen well in advance. And so I might just sort of uh add that this is current, this is what's, this is the budget that begins in two weeks. So this is, like, this is starts in two weeks and all the work that we did was six months ago or eight months ago. But now it begins, so it is, and 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 part of the reason there were significant changes over last year is because they were taking into account the surprising changes that happened during last year's school year. So now those changes are into this budget and it begins in two weeks. And so it's, it is very current, this is what's going on.
It is current, but it will be different.
Next year, next year it'll be different.
It's hard as it today.
Yes.
I think it's fair to note too that we will be following the default budget line.
Yes.
It's too far over.
Right, and if you look at the, what was proposed, there were certain lines that administration tried to get into the budget. But because we are in a default budget, we won't get those lines. Anything that was new, it's basically zeroed out, so.
The line no, will no longer exist. So anytime you, you create a new budget line in a proposed budget, and if that budget does not pass, that line or counter will just not make it into the board. For your budget. So when you see the actual, you'll get a, a final actual budget. Um that line will no longer be part of the same office system.
Um and that you may be going over this for the second line of the timeline, but the SAU budget process happens earlier.
It does, yeah, we actually start really beginning of August. Um timeframe is where we really start um pulling together and doing really the same type of things that the principals do, just on a smaller scale. Um and then I will generate a first draft. We need as a whole team, we really work the need of what that draft will look like. I pull it together, we meet again several times before it goes before the executive. Um so usually the first meeting for the executive board is usually, I think it's around like September eighth or twelfth or some, somewhere around there. That's where the first um draft is presented. Uh we have a roundtable conversation, we go through everything. We do a presentation just like we do for the school boards, we do for the executive board. Um sometimes changes might be made at that setting, sometimes they just want to digest it. We come back again, uh talk about it again. Usually need two or three times to discuss it at the executive board level before it goes to the full board. Um so then, once the meetings happen with the executive board, they are basically then sort of kind of like the school board is proposing one for the executive board. I mean, um for the NBC, it's the same kind of thing. The executive board is proposing to send it to the full board, um what they would recommend. Um and then I believe it's the full board gets season at least two times as well.
Yes, so in October, there are lots of meetings.
Yes.
I think there are two full board meetings in October. Um for budget stuff. And I, I was on executive board last year, so I feel like I know that slightly more. If you've never been on executive board, it feels a little bit foreign. But the executive board meetings are also open to the public if anyone is interested. We, I mean, you'll get the SAU budget in advance of the full board meetings. But if you are really interested in the SAU budget, want to hear about it, I would recommend going to those meetings as an audience member. Because they really dig into the meat of what's in the SAU budget and um discuss everything there. Once the full board approves it, it becomes part of our budget and we can't change it from there. So if you want to talk about it, if you want to review it, we, you have to get involved early.
Yeah, so with the board, our SAU budget has to be approved so that the rest of the boards can have the bottom.
Yep. Um and I would say if you, the SAU budget is on the SAU website.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also posted on the town website last year, if you're looking for it, but you can't find it, let me know, I'm happy to give you that so you can see. I will say the SAU budget is a little bit confusing in terms, in terms of what it covers. Because it's sort of different per district, what we pay for. So like, I remember looking at the SAU budget last year and being like, why is there a preschool line in here? Like, we have our own preschool, what are we paying for? So we don't actually pay for the SAU preschool, it's broken down, but all of that's very confusing.
Yeah, we actually have multiple budgets because we have, we call what we call funds. So we have like an SAU office budget. And then we have other fund budgets that cover services like preschool.
Shared special ed services.
Exactly, which then are then given out based on a, you know, percentage of what services are provided to each district, based on the work. So it is.
It's confusing if you haven't been through it before, I will say.
We are trying to simplify it as much as possible. We have been looking at, um as we already discussed at the last budget session, we actually got rid of one fund and merged two together to try to simplify things. Because really, both funds were providing similar services. It made more sense for um all contracted services to be together rather than separate amount. So we're trying to simplify as much as possible. Um so hopefully it becomes a little bit easier to digest for everybody in person.
Yeah, and I, I would just encourage anyone who um is interested to attend. Because people, I think gratefully, including board members, have a lot of questions about the SAU budget. And so in order to be able to explain it and talk about it, I think it's helpful to go to the meetings and observe and be a part of the discussion where you can learn about this stuff. Cause when people see the SAU budget, it's also confusing for them. So if you can help explain that, yes, there is a fund for preschool, but we don't actually pay for that fund. But yes, we do have to approve. Um it's a little bit confusing, gratefully. Um so just being as engaged in the process as you can is helpful because people have questions about it. And obviously we want to explain if we can.
I think it's the, the meat of the fund one, which is the main SAU office budget. It's important to remember, you know, people hear the SAU budget and it somehow has like wrinkled spaces. Um but it's really the, it's the services that are provided to your schools. It's where the person that pays your teachers is housed, it's where the person that pays all the bills is housed. So everything at the SAU office is, are the services we provide to eight schools. So it, that's really the takeaway. Um there's a pretty big chunk of our SAU budget that other, I tried to look around at other SAUs to help, see how they do their budget. We have a whole technology section that some SAUs don't do it that way, everything is in your buildings. But it's, for whatever reason, always been this way where the technology, um IT director salary is there. And then he prepares all the budgets for, um he does bulk buying of a lot of our accounts and services so that each school um has what they need at a lower cost. Um so it's, that's like a whole bottom section of that budget that's not really relative to the, to the other services that you receive from personnel servicing your um schools.
Right, but the reason we do that is because dividing that cost makes it much more efficient for five districts to divide that cost rather than us to have an IT person housed in our building.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and there are a lot of vendors that maybe not want five different jobs. So in order to get the savings they want to build through one means. So the higher the enrollment number, we're able to divide the cost out. So it really has provided significant savings on a lot of the software and programs that the schools use.
Great. Um can we talk a little bit about the default budget?
Sure.
And how that's created, how, basically an overview of the default.
Sure, so it's similar to, it's very similar to, um well, I should say it's very similar, it's just not. It's similar to creating a regular budget, but it does have a lot of differences. Uh and that is because it can't be a zero base because you have to go off a last year, uh what the previous year was. The defaults are an extreme challenge, um because there are a lot of gray areas. Um I've been to conferences, I, you know, I've read the laws, I've talked to other colleagues throughout the state. And what I will tell you is if I ask you what you do, and I ask you what you do, and I ask you what you do, everybody does it slightly different. What I might add, someone might, and someone else might not, and vice versa. So a lot of it, or some of it, I should say, is interpretation of what the, the law is saying or what they're saying should be and what it shouldn't be. Um so basically what I do is I look at, I go line by line, every single line. Um and then I take a look at, I go back and I look at how many FTEs. So for your personnel, that's the first place I always start. Is I go through all of the personnel, look at how many we had in the current year. Um and how many we are proposing for the following. And the reason being is you can only have the same amount of FTEs. The difference is, is that uh there are a couple things. One, you can carry forward any position that is vacant that you are looking to fill for repurpose. If it's an eliminated position and you don't have a need for it somewhere else, you have to get rid of it. But if you were moving a, let's say, a reading specialist to, I don't know, I'll just say IT position or something like that. You can repurpose to different areas as long as you don't go over to all of them.
The number, and FTEs for people don't know, it's full-time employees.
Correct, and we have made changes in our, um in our documents that on the top of our budget rosters, we um show how many FTEs are in each category, uh which, you know, helped us out too. So that when I go back to calculate, it's easy to see. I think the other thing I did in this last past or this current budget is in each of the subsections underneath, um like say eleven hundred, one ten, those teachers. I think I put how many FTEs were in that subsection um as well. So that's one thing, so I look at FTEs to see where we're at. I also create or send um administration at the school all the lines where a one-time expense could occur. And I say, okay, you budgeted this, but last year, this is what was budgeted, why the change? So that I can determine if it was a one-time expense or if it isn't. Um and so I go through that spreadsheet and then it's a Google Doc, so it's a working document that administration and I can see. And I'll let them know whether it will become part of the book or whether it isn't.
So can we just give a really simple example, I think I'll get this right. You know, Kristen budgeted for a new library table and it was ten thousand dollars and she got the table. She doesn't get to put ten thousand dollars in the furniture line last year because that was a one-time purchase. If you're on a replacement cycle, like we have the plan for technology, that can stay consistent. But anything that was a one-time budgeted item and it was purchased, it goes back to zero for the default budget.
Right, basically anything new over and beyond what you have, unless it is um special, special services. If it is for special education, it is required by law that we provide that piece of equipment, so that has to go.
Yep.
But if you wanted additional chairs or tables, unless it is part of a replacement cycle that has already been spoken about in several meetings, which we do every year, we've been talking about it, I don't know, probably, I've been here nine years, so I think since then. Um it has become part of that replacement cycle, so we've been allowed to carry that.
In technology in particular.
In technology is really the only place that that, that occurs. Um sometimes there is, some of the districts also do a furniture uh replacement cycle. So that could also be another area that exists in the country. Uh so I look at those types of things. Um and then we, so then I go through and compare each of the problems comparative to what's been budgeted to what was less. Um that's pretty much what I, what I do. I look at what contracts we had in place, whether they can carry forward. A lot of our contracts are contracts that overlap years, uh which is why they might show up in the phone with people. Um I've been, what I have heard is that if it is something that is required, then it is allowed to be given. Or if it's something contractual or mandated by law, we can carry forward.
So for instance, like we are required to provide busing to K through eight students. So even if the board decided we, well, I don't know what, what's happening with the bus, with the buses, I don't want to think about that quite yet. But that would carry forward, I mean, that is a contract and also it's required by law. Um so I don't know which category that would fall into for the default. But we are required to, I assume there's some sort of formula, how we figure out how many students will need busing and stuff. So we can figure out what bus is getting carried forward or based on the contract.
Some conversations that I have had.
This kind of more, this was a more complicated example than I thought it would be.
Well, the people does not, it is complicated. It really is not a lucky one situation.
Yeah.
It really isn't, um.
I think Amber has consulted attorney Egert many times over the years because we come, still come to things and she'll come to me and we'll talk it through. And does this stay in, does this come out? Well, we could justify that it's this, but it could be that. And we just call attorney Egert and say, is this something that gets to stay in the default budget? And, and it's his advice because it is, people do do it differently for sure around the scene.
Yeah, and I think if there are questions when we're reviewing the default, that, I think those are fair questions.
Yes.
Uh yeah, absolutely.
We can certainly get legal counsel involved and get clarity on whether or not we should include them. Um but again, that requires people to sort of taking a good look and close look at the default budget and asking the questions so that we are prepared with the answer.
Can you, I know questions have come up about um utilities and propane and oil and electricity, can you talk about that?
Yeah, I did, I feel like that there are some things everywhere it says, no, we can't do that. Some things I read that says you can do that, it's, if it are under contract. The other, the other part is, is that you have to put the lights on, you have to heat your building. There are have to, have to occur. So I do feel like it's a gray area, but from advice that I have received, it's something that we would include mostly because a lot of those contracts are that overlap. So it's, it occurs year to year, or we use the same vendor. The only changes that might happen is.
Oster, gallon or whatever.
Correct, right. But we do take a look at them every year, we do, we do a lot of analytical work over it. Um we have made changes up and down, dependent on what it may be, um based off of what we actually need for.
Awesome.
I think one of the other things that comes up is there are sometimes there'll be changes that might happen in like the current year. Um for like a position. And then it becomes like a contractual obligation for the district. So that contractual obligation will move forward to the next step. Because you can't go backwards in time once you have contract, um with personnel, you can only go forward. So I think that's one of the things I think a lot, you know, people may question. Uh but that is advice that I have received, that once you come into an agreement, it becomes a contractual obligation for the district to be pulled. A couple of years ago, we had a position that actually dropped off the roster. It was actually just a hidden column or. It was actually just a hidden column or a row. Uh, and we were, obviously I was very concerned because we were in default, um, and we were missing an entire position. And so I reached out to our attorney and I said, this is what happened. And they said, by, by law, it is a contractual obligation. It is a position that has been ongoing for a number of years. It was just an error on roster, that amount needs to be put in.
Right.
So there are some, you know, I, I wish I could sit here and tell you this one way, but it just is.
Yep.
Um, but I'm, I'm open for suggestions, um, and I will ultimately prepare the default cover before institutions. The board's budget as well, it's the operating budget as well as the default budget. So we can have more discussion as we're going through it and developing it. Um, and I can tell you my whys as we're going through the individual lines. It might help a little, a little bit more as, as we're actually walking through it, rather than just the overall discussion.
Yeah, and like I said, if there are things that we're not sure about or if we have questions, we can certainly get a legal counsel engaged.
We do also create a state form, um, a default form that has to be submitted to the department revenue. And on there, any changes have to also be noted on there, what the changes were and why. Um, so that has been submitted year after year as well. That document is also posed before the public hearing and the decision.
And that gets approved.
It gets submitted to the revenue for review.
Um, I did have, um, Patty include, I made a PowerPoint last year about sort of breaking down the school, the school budget. Um, obviously, the budget is a lot for people to digest. And, you know, it's hard to sort of group things together just by the groupings in the budget. Because like if you wanted to look at total staff, salaries, benefits, et cetera, it's, it's very hard to do in the budget itself. So I created this, I took every single line of this and categorized it in a way that made sense to my brain. Hopefully it makes sense to others. Um, but like I put all staff, so teachers, secretaries, custodial staff, everything into, into one chunk so that we can sort of see when we're looking at it, how much of our budget is for various things that we have to pay for. Um, I think for me at least, it really helped me sort of look at what we're spending money on and, you know, sort of visualize where funds are going. So I do plan to do this again, begrudgingly a little bit, it did take a lot of time. But I, again, I like to do a sort of deep dive in the budget and get really, um, up to my elbows in the numbers because that's just how I process things.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
It just hit me when I was looking at it. So if you've got teachers, staff salaries, everybody in that first one.
Mm-hmm.
The sped ESL, um, ESOL and the guidance, that doesn't include personnel, is that just other costs? Like where are the personnel in the first one or in the?
The all, so we're looking at budget breakdown by category?
Uh, yeah.
That was all staff.
Right, so then this.
Yes.
Twenty percent is what, like, um, support that they need as far as.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Uh, no, transportation is its own line.
Even special ed transportation is with the transportation.
Uh, I, I did this very intentionally and, but now I don't remember which way I did it. Um.
It's okay, I know as well, I was just curious.
I made this probably in November. Um.
Well, you're gonna do it again, so we'll ask you then.
And if you, I can look, cause it's still all color-coded. Um, I also did a breakdown of salaries by position type. So we have regular ed teachers, special ed, principals, admin, guidance, et cetera. Just so we can sort of see where those costs are. Um, if there is a budget increase, I would do another, what accounts for the budget increase. Um, and then I also did a special ed breakdown. So that's sort of what, what our special ed costs are for. Um, so we have special placements, so those are, uh, out of district placements and also high school special ed.
So this might, this might be that third column minus the staff, maybe.
Yeah, I, I think I included all staff in that one, in the first one. Um, but yeah, so this would have been.
Special placements.
Special placements. Any, probably any contracted services. So we have, you know, we have some contract services through the SAU, we have some with outside vendors. Um, so anything that wasn't a staff at DCS, I would have put.
As, as special ed services.
Okay, it's probably. Um, and then I did a breakdown of transportation, um, just so people know sort of how much is for special ed transportation K through eight and for high school and for the summer program. Um, yeah, so I do plan to do it again, I think it was helpful. If no, if for no one else, it was helpful for me, um, so that I can talk about it. But, um, if you, if anyone has suggestions about any other sort of categories or breakdowns, I'm happy to, happy to do that. Um, this was published on Facebook and maybe the town website, maybe the SAU website. I can't remember. Um, but if people have other ideas about how to sort of get any budget information out to people.
We try to, every time we have a new draft of the budget, we, Amber gives it to Ashley to put on the website. So everything you see, we immediately put it up so that the public can see the most current draft and see where you're working on if they choose to. So it goes in multiple places.
The other thing I do during the budget session is, um, I'll also create a memo of changes. So from one meeting to the next, I will reference the line, the page number of a change occurred so that it helps to keep track of what's happened from the, and you'll get that, that will also go in the drive. You'll, you'll get a hard copy of it to, you know, to go in your binder and consume choose as well. But we do, I do try to keep track of it that way, um, as well.
Yeah.
So we kind of know where we started and where we ended and the reasons why.
And that reminds me that, um, I wouldn't get married to the number that comes into our first full, um, bu- budget draft because we might get updated information about benefits or, you know, whatever along the way. So there will be changes and additions throughout the process. So I wouldn't start going around saying, we have a, this is our budget for the year because it's likely not going to be the end number. Um, until we hand it over to the NBC, they review it, hand it back, we vote on it, and then it's, then, then we'll be final.
We, and we keep the information as updated as possible minute by minute throughout the, the point that you give it to the NBC. So, you know, we're starting this in September and in, you know, mid-November, a student moves that had been receiving services in and out of district placement and it was in here for $200,000 and that student moves, we're gonna adjust your budget for you. So as, but the opposite can happen too. You know, we came back last year several times with, uh, we need to add more because something just happened with a placement or what have your transportation, all of that can change. And then we do, we get the health insurance rates are not always ready when we first do the budget, so that will get updated.
They don't, they don't come out until typically around between November ninth through, I think, the fifteenth or so. So you have already seen a version or two, maybe even three, depending on how many meetings you have by that point in time. So that number, um, is another reason why it's better for, um, us to have the, the building needs be presented first. So that you're not just holding on, because obviously that's a pretty substantial number. So I think the last time, because, so I'd be, because I didn't have the exact number, I at least had the people and I had what plans they were on. So I just did an estimate of what I thought. I contacted our insurance company and said, what are you kind of seeing? Um, I talked with colleagues around the state, what they were kind of seeing. Um, and so I kind of did an estimate off of that to give you at least a first draft and then revise it on the actual.
So I know this is like so much to take in. Um, but I do, I would recommend, especially for our new members, to take some time over the summer and look at things. Um, because it, it comes in passive.
I think this is a great idea that you had to do this because it, it does catch a new board member off guard when October, November, you start throwing, it's like, yes. You start getting the, here's your first packet and you can never see these options and scores.
Well, and you're just, it's, it's never sort of clear when you can make changes or when like, when things are finalized. And so my advice is that if you have something you wanted to discuss, if you have an idea, if you wanna talk about something, bring it up at any point when we're, if you're reviewing budget or beforehand, um, so that we can have a discussion and we're not waiting for the last, the last budget meeting.
At that point, I mean, like we've said, this is our budget, even though it's, it starts where it starts. But this is the board's budget to move forward and so any changes need to come from us. And so that's, we're the ones that instigate and ask questions and make changes and propose changes and then vote on whether we wanna make the change or not as a board.
Yeah.
So have those ideas before you come to the meeting, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, we do, you'll notice we put as many notes in there as we can. Um, every year, we, you know, when Kristen and I sit down and do the building budgets, one of us is typing notes as we're doing the numbers so that you can look at that line and say, what the heck does that mean? And you'll see the breakdown, like, oh, that's included in those notes at the bottom of each number, so that's also helpful.
And we have a couple of appendixes as well. Do we have like a maintenance and facilities appendix, we have an IT appendix, so there's a couple of those as well. You'll see as backup documentation within your binder. Um, and then embedded in the, um, budget, during budget session, um, it'll say like C appendix A. So when you go up, when you go to that line, you'll say, oh, okay, I gotta go appendix A, it'll give you the list of what that breakdown is for that one.
Um, and just a few words of wisdom while reviewing the budget. So there are subtotals within the budget that I was quite confused about the first time I looked at it. So any line that says F U N C, funk, function, that's a subtotal for that group. So I was like, I don't understand why we have so many duplicate rows, but it's because it's a subtotal. Um, so just when you're looking at it, I highlighted all the subtotals lines because that was easier for my brain to process. That it was not a line that we're gonna be changing or amending, it's a subtotal.
And when it was in Excel, Amber could draw attention to that. But once it goes into the finance system, the way it gets printed, we can't change that and it's not obvious.
Yes. Um, and then the other one is the account note. It, it goes all the way to the bottom.
It's dropped down.
It's dropped down, it is for the line above, even though it's closer to the line below, it's for the line above. Um, which can be.
Format and change, I can get it, I tried.
And that's fine, I think I, you get used to, you get used to it, um, but just.
And it's error-free, I mean, every year we struggled with formulas and building it into something like that in an Excel sheet is so many, there's so many spots for errors. Um, but this is, you put the number in the finance system and spits it out and there can't be any errors happening.
I did think it, I felt like it made things a little more streamlined, I feel like things went a little quicker. Uh, my end wants, I mean, I taught myself how to do it this past year. So, I mean, it took a little bit of, you know, enagling at first, but once I got to the first couple of districts and, you know, it seemed like things flowed pretty, pretty quickly after that. Um, it does, it does, the downside is I can't color code.
Oh, I do miss the color coding.
I, I, I missed the color code.
I color code on my own, there's lots of highlighter colors, because I like a color code. And I do lots of flags in color coding, because it helps me to look at it. Um, but does anyone have any sort of questions or comments about the budget process? Yeah.
Not the place to get into a big conversation about it, but I, but it is tied to the budget that we also have auditing happening. And I know that that's been a conversation at the exec board level and we've, it's been, we've been, we've been hiring and getting a bunch of people to get caught up. And that is, last I heard, caught up till last year or two years ago?
Or.
They, um, they have audited every, um, right up to twenty-two, twenty-three. They actually came, what's today, Thursday?
Wednesday.
Uh, today's Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, clearly.
I had to think about it, we only have meetings.
They were here yesterday, they were here yesterday already pulling, um, some data for the twenty-three, twenty-four that we're currently in. So they've already actually started the current year budget audit. So the thing, what we're waiting for is just re- final written reports. But the actual audit work has all been, has been done. We are fully caught up with every district, um, right up through twenty-two, twenty-three. And like, and they, when they came yesterday, they were pulling information for every district to get them started, so.
When I was on the exec board a couple of years ago, it was a little bit more of a lag, but we've been working double time. Not we haven't, but people have been working double time to get caught up and thank you very much for doing that.
No, no problem. The teams that are auditing firm have sent over and it's been different people all the time. Um, but they've been very helpful and, uh, we've streamlined a lot of stuff. A lot of our stuff, like it's electronic, pretty much everything is electronic, um, in terms of the scheme stuff in now. So we're not going downstairs in the government searching for stuff, so that's really been a time saver. Uh, so things are, we've changed a lot of, uh, policies and procedures along the way. Once the, um, final audit is done for twenty-two, twenty-three and I've received the final report, I will be creating, for those of you who have been here since the time I've been here, uh, when I first started, I had created what I called like an audit matrix, where I basically outlined any of like the findings or changes we needed to make and then attributed them to what needed to change and who was willing to accomplish that change, kind of like a strategic plan anyway. Um, I will be doing that again for all of the districts. It just, I'm waiting because we have really made a lot of changes over the last several years. So because we were behind it, I would be, we've already fixed a lot of the stuff that's coming through some of these lines. So, in fact, even yesterday when they were asking questions, um, there were things we changed even last year. So they were taking that off their list, so you'll get that, so you'll be able to see what needs to occur and who's gonna make those changes. I am also working on over the summer, um, a policy and procedure handbook. So we have policies and procedures, we have, everything is a procedure that we do. But the problem is it's having time to kind of write it all down. So that's one of the things we, we've gotten ticked on and it's, it's real, it's true, there just hasn't been time to do it. Um, but now that we have the, the accountant, it's gonna free up some time to get that done. So we will, I've already started working on that, my teams already started working on that. So we'll have that done, so while that is a finding on some of the audit reports or all of them, that will drop off.
Thank you.
Wow.
All right, anything else for budget?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that satiated my budget discussion for tonight. Um, thank you again for coming, Amber.
You're welcome.
We look forward to seeing you in October.
I look forward to it, so. Actually by then, I'm like, all right, I'm ready to be done with here and then I'm ready to move on to something even exciting.
I'm not quite there yet, but I will get there. Um, okay, so we will move on to public comments.
Karen Virgo, Karen Road, also a member of the NBC. Uh, we had our organizational meeting a month ago and we agreed on post-schedule, uh, supplies and circulation to all the board members. Um, so that's what I leave for the conversation earlier, so I forward it to you so you can see. So the NBC is under legal deadline by natural loss and we also have to work backwards from that. And so what, what was breed at the NBC with, uh, with the school and select board, we're expecting to see the school board budget on Tuesday, December third. Because we have to be done by, by mid-Jing, where we're applying for public hearings. Uh, there's deadlines, so then that has to be done, it has to be termed, uh, termed over to the, you know, to the town. At the end of the day, the default budget is the school board's budget. So, uh, they get the nail right on the, right on the head. If you delegate crafting the default budget to someone else, that's fine, that's just logic. If it's done incorrectly, eventually the responsibility falls on the school, really, really second directors of that, so the default budget is your budget. One thing we've heard for a long, long time, and I don't disagree, is budgeting is a little bit hard because we're a March town meeting town. So we're crafting school budgets really early. Town side is the flip side, right? They start spending J and refers for a budget that doesn't even go to ballot box at the second two. this second Tuesday in March, and they're, they're spending on a budget that, you know, it's terrorizing, even. NHRS A does allow you to change, doesn't have to be a March town meeting for the school, just go over the town. So you could, you could put the warrant art along the ballot to move the school voting cabinet meeting from March to April, May, or even as late as June. So you'd be voting the second Tuesday in June, right? So you, you could actually buy yourself a lot of time to, to move, to move that forward. If you do that, then all the requirements for the NBC slide with you, right? So instead of us having to have everything done in January, we have to have everything done in, you know, March or May, depending on the 20th. You did, so if you wanted to be able to budget closer to the beginning of your school year, closer to the closing of the books, that is potentially, look, the cost would be two, two elections, right? Because the town, the town's not gonna want to pay six dollars to figure out what kind of cash they're gonna be running. I, I just have one quick question, so. I watch the meetings, right, I have to admit, I play them twice the speed, so I don't, I don't catch it. For a while, we were talking about deficit, potentially 30,000 schools. So we can be out of date of where we are expected to be in, in June, because at least we're expecting a deficit, so how much? Are we thinking we're gonna go to those?
Yeah, we forgot to go over this, so that would be actually good feedback, is that okay?
Sure.
We have that answer and we forgot to give it to the board, so we can do it right now.
So is there a nutshell answer to that?
Yeah. Well, let's just add it as an agenda item after public comments, if that works.
Yeah, that's fine, all right, that's all I have.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
No, no, that's fine.
Amber Q, Harvey Road, um, I brought this up before, so I wanna bring it up again and I'll bring it up, um, during budget season when we meet, um, with the NBC. But listening to Amber was very helpful, thank you, Amber. Um, I wanna talk about the specialists and the interventionalists specifically and bringing them in perhaps to fill the learning gaps from COVID. So when we brought them in, I would assume that there was grant money given throughout after 2020 to fill those positions and to create those positions. Some of those positions, and I think there's about three positions, maybe there's not even, maybe there's one, maybe there's two, specifically for instructional coach and reading specialist and math interventionalist. If we are to keep those positions open, now that we're going into 2024, 2025, should they in fact be converted over to an open position as Amber stated? Because those aren't contractual, those aren't special ed that I know of. But that's something that I'd really like addressed, especially because they've become part of the default budget now. Does that, and that's okay, I understand the want and need to have these staff members. But we're going into 2020, we're going into 2025 season, so, you know, we're five years post-COVID. Does that still align? So that, that's my main concern. And again, we'll talk about it when the NBC comes up, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Okay, we will move on. Fiscal year, we're adding in, for Trish, we're adding in a number 10, uh, fiscal year 23, 24 update.
Do you have your memo in front of you, Amber?
I do.
Okay, good, thank you.
Do you mind just giving the summary of that?
Oh, yes, 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 and I actually, uh, yeah, this has been put in your drive, but I did have to change another change today that's not on here. Um, so I have a little bit different number to give you. And this is obviously a working number until we close. But I've broken out the memo just like I have given to you in the previous meetings. Your, basically your bottom line that I gave you on your sheet was 147,000. With that said, we had a special ed change that came through today, um, for 46,000 to the pool, so we're at 190,000. So we had $150,000, which warrant articles, those would get colored through. So right now, we are in the green. We still have invoices coming in, uh, which is one of the reasons why, um, we were able to reduce, um, some of the special ed that came through, there are these voice game requests that anticipated. We also have other reconciliations, any open POs that aren't being fully utilized because invoices come in less than once a month, that will get reduced and drop off. We could increase the bottom line as well. We still have, um, health and dental reconciliations to do, which we can't do until after the final payment has been made. So we do still have some things coming through, so this number will change. It shouldn't change dra- drastically at this point. But that is pretty much where we're at, the revenue is, is, is what it is. There should not be much change in revenue at all. Um, and the reason for that being is, is the majority of that revenue comes in during specific times of year. So for those of you that are new, um, the town appropriation payments are paid on a monthly, are paid monthly. Town does a wonderful job getting those in on time. Bank interest is well, obviously something that will, will change month to month. Advisory aid comes in four times a year, the last thing that comes in April. So all of that has been received. Catastrophic aid, which is also called special ed aid, that comes in one time a year, that comes in December. So we know pretty early on, um, whether there's a shortfall or additional revenue, whether. The IDA, the majority of that comes in by May. Medicaid will come in right through the end of June, sometimes we might even get a little bit until July. And then really those are.
Can I talk about that state aid check that we received?
Oh, yes.
Because it, we had, and this is sort of.
This is why there's a.
Saved us in the end. We received $121,000 check and Amber said, do you know what this is for? And none of us could figure it out, and it was for Deerfield. Um, so we were calling people, it didn't get identified what department it even came from. So we did research and come to find out, actually a funding promise was fulfilled, which, when they increased the, um, special education age through age 21 and said, well, we're doing that, but don't worry, we're gonna help you fund that the first year because we know you didn't budget for it. And we had no idea that was coming, so, and that's why we got it. For students that went through age 21, um, after researching it, we were, had some reimbursement, which was great. Uh, but that, think of, think about if we didn't have that $121,000, you would be like barely ending even, so.
And that just came in a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, so that was, we were, we didn't do anything with it until we knew it was really ours, because $121,000 check showing up to the Deerfield School District was suspect.
It said some law or it said something, and I wonder what it was.
Yeah, we, I know what, I know what the law was, but I didn't, we didn't know we were giving the money, so that's great.
No, I'm saying the law that it noted on here.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
You looked it up, actually, go over it, it wasn't.
It wasn't, didn't match, right.
Can I, just to follow up, so, am I, am I understanding this correctly? Um, that the, the legislature changed the requirements for covering specialized students to age 21?
Yeah.
Was this year, through age 21 was this year, or recently, last year? And then because that would lead to an increased cost for the school districts, they said they'd cover it, and that's what this is, but that's for one year. So then that also leads to, now we do have to cover them next year, but we don't get funding, so that has led to an increase in the budget for next year, because now we're increasing our coverage.
If we have students, year to year, we don't know, we'll have students, some students don't need programming through age 21, some years we have students, some years we don't.
Okay.
Depends on their needs individually.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anybody next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so it did significantly help. I was just.
Cool, did that answer your question?
It did, thank you. I'm pretty sure I know sponsor.
Thank you for making sure we get funded.
It was really kids. You do have to cover costs.
That's important.
Will you cover the costs?
Uh, someone cover the cost.
Here we are, covering the costs.
Yes, perfect. Okay.
We do need non-public.
We do, okay.
Small letter c.
I was gonna say, I don't know, yeah, small. We are, yes, we, well, we're having a non-public, then we're having a non-meeting, and then we're coming back. So we'll announce the change in between, but.
Should I just make a quick request? If you guys approve a contract, it just, it may be as possible to be seen.
Yes. Yes. Yep, I will certainly forward it as soon as it's drafted and the numbers are ready.
That would be awesome, thanks.
Absolutely. Okay, I will make a motion to go to non-public session pursuant to NHRS A 91 dash 8, volume 3, section 2, small letter c.
Can I have a second, or you guys don't wanna do?
Second.
I'll second it. Oh, Nate did, give it to Nate. All right, Ellen?
She does it so quietly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
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 All right.
Do you want me to, um, you know, just stop recording? Do you want me to, do you want me to come back to record? How do you wanna do this? I don't know how, how that works, are we done with the Google Meet yet? I mean, I don't know.
Are you okay ending it?
Yes. I mean, I can try to log back on afterwards and see if someone can.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how that works, we have to, we need to ask this.
Does she combine them?
Yeah, she might be able to.
Maybe.
Trish, you're all set, thank you.